Good evening, and I'd like to welcome you to Oak Harbor's regular city council meeting, February 7th, 2017. I see it's 6:00 and time to begin. I'd like to call that meeting to order. We'll start with an invocation led by Pastor David Parker, Oak Harbor United Methodist Church. It's nice to see you Pastor.
Thank you.
We'll follow that with myself leading the pledge of allegiance. Please join us if you'd like.
Thank you Mayor. Let's pray. "Gracious and loving God, we are so very grateful that you have set apart these fine leaders, these men and women, to serve the needs of our greater community. We pray for the wisdom and the guidance of heaven as they gather here tonight to convene with themselves and also with the citizens to reflect, to decide, and to determine courses and paths for the future. Pray, Lord, over their lives and into their counsel, a spirit of unity and a spirit of camaraderie, that we together will build this community to be a grand place. And so may you have favor and may you have blessing fall upon them in their hearts and also in their minds tonight. And I ask these blessings in Jesus' name. Amen."
Thank you Pastor Parker. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Looks like we have a full council tonight. It's nice to see. I'd like to welcome you in the viewing, out there in the viewing audience also. We're going to start off with item number one, which is approval of agenda. Does anybody have any change in the agenda? Okay. Looking for, yes.
Thank you Mayor, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion by Counselor Servadius, second by Counselor Heisen to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We have no actual scheduled proclamations for tonight, or special recognitions or presentations, so we're down to item number three, citizen comment, period. This is a time where citizens may comment on subjects of interest not listed on the agenda or items listed on the consent agenda. To ensure comments are recorded properly, state your name clearly into the microphone. Please limit comments to three minutes to ensure all citizens have sufficient time to speak. And I see we've had one sign in, Casey Scott Mitchell.
Hello. My name is Casey Scott Mitchell. Pardon me while I read from my notes here. I want to make sure I cover all my talking points. So I'm here on behalf of the Oak Harbor Youth Coalition. There are several of us here tonight. And just for those of you that aren't familiar, our mission at the Youth Coalition is to support and encourage the positive development of Oak Harbor youth. And we're here tonight to inform the council that currently there is no ordinance that regulates e-cigarette use in most public places, which means that someone can use e-cigarettes, or what's commonly referred to as vaping, in grocery stores, movie theaters, most public offices. They could even be vaping right here in the city council chambers. This is a concern to us for most folks in this community, but especially we're concerned about the health of our youth. I'm just going to read a couple of facts here regarding e-cigarettes and health effects. So, the Surgeon General cited this as a major public health concern for youth, along with a 298-page report in December of 2016. And the Surgeon General is calling the public to action to take steps, really, on behalf of the youth. In looking at the studies on e-cigarettes and it's fairly new research coming out, while they say they're nicotine-free, most of the liquids that were tested, about a third of them were found to contain nicotine, which we know has a very negative effect on the development of the adolescent brain. Also, studies have shown that secondhand smoke contains very harmful toxins. And our concern at the Coalition is that when youth see people using e-cigarettes out in public, as we know it's pretty prevalent at this point, they're not fully understanding the negative health effects for themselves. A couple more statistics, and then I'll cut it off here. E-cigarette use among youth has increased 900% since 2011, 900%. And it is currently the most common form of tobacco used among youth. So at this point, the Coalition is asking the city council to consider passing a local ordinance that would include vaping or e-cigarette use in the Smoking in Public Places Act, so that it could be regulated in these public places. Several of our surrounding counties have passed similar ordinances, and I believe you have examples of those ordinances in front of you. You also should have some additional facts on e-cigarette use and the negative health consequences. So at this point, we request that you bring this issue forward for discussion on a future agenda. Thank you.
Thank you Casey, nicely done. Okay, anyone else at this time? Citizen comment, period. Yes.
My name is Carol Clayton. I'm with Skagit County Coalition Against Trafficking, but I live maybe a half a mile from here. So I'm a proud resident of Oak Harbor. I was here in August to invite you to a meeting with King County Prosecutor Valiant Ritchie. That went off on the 23rd of August. I pulled five counties from King County all the way to the border, Nomish, Skagit, Watcom, Island, and San Juans. And we had representatives from everyone. And now we're having, that was just Val Ritchie, now we're including his whole team that meets every two weeks. And March 1st, and I'll send everyone an invitation, March 1st, they're going to present. And what they're going to present, where selling kids have exploded in every major city. There is one county in the whole nation where it is going down, and that's King County. And so, it's been going down for two years. And so, they're coming to give us a recipe of such. And I know that Island County Sheriff is coming, our police is coming, and I would just like more Oak Harbor people to come, because you're my family here. And not only that, but I want to be a very active part to do something positive in my community, your community. And so, anyway, and I'm also looking for a videographer, if anybody knows. And the reason is that everybody here, if you can't make it, I want it to be available at the library for everybody to be able to see. Because, you know, it's not, everybody thinks police when they think of human trafficking, but it's a community problem. We need a community solution. And that's why when this young lady came and spoke, my heart went pitter-patter, because she's part of my family here in Oak Harbor. So I'm going to pass this. If you choose to come, be sure and RSVP, because we're going to feed you breakfast and we're going to feed you lunch. And, because it's going to be from 9:00 to 3:00. So, anyway, so far we've got at least 180 people coming. And I just want Oak Harbor to show up and be counted, okay? So, thank you.
Thank you Ms. Clayton. We, it's my understanding, I think the school district might be able to help with the videography. It's just a thought. I know that they have some people.
With the high school?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Citizen comment, period. Going once, twice? Okay, we're on to item number four, our consent agenda. Looks like we have A through, items A through E. Counselor, anybody want to, yes Counselor Holmberg.
Thank you Mayor. I make the motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion to approve consent agenda as presented by Counselor Holmberg, second by Counselor Campbell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We are on to item number five. And actually, it looks like item number five is going to be our last item. There are a few areas here. I'll start off with a couple of comments. I like to, I'm notified by our search and rescue people out at NAS Whitby when they've got activity. And I, it was just after our last council meeting in January that I got an email that indicated that, search and, it said Naval Air Station Whitby Island Search and Rescue SAR crews from Naval Air Station conducted five separate missions within a six-day period, including one search and four medical evacuations. And I can tell you that having NAS Whitby, and especially that SAR operation as close as we do, is a wonderful thing for, especially people in the islands, and obviously any surrounding areas where we've got the need for search and/or medical evacuations. It's a wonderful thing. Also wanted to make note that, and a reminder to please vote on the proposed replacement levy for the Oak Harbor School District. Voting falls on Valentine's Day, or I guess, end of the period is April 14th, which is Valentine's Day. So, a reminder to please vote. And then, my last item is, I'm looking, I will be looking to appoint a couple of counselors to take the place of Counselor Pagau and Counselor Campbell on our LEAF One Board. Their terms expire in May of 2017. So, I'll be looking for a couple of counselors here to step up. That's, I sat on that. And I can tell you, it's not, it's not an active, or a real active board. They probably meet a couple times a year, if that. So, if you're interested, please let me know. And with that, I'm going to pass it on to anybody on the council. Mayor Protim, go ahead.
I would like to request to be excused for the next regular council meeting. I will not be available at that time.
Okay. We can, I think probably we'll vote at that time to excuse you. Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else?
That's all.
Okay. Yes, Counselor Mundt.
Thank you. I just wanted to give a shout out to the community for, thank you for donating so many warm coats for students that needed in our school district. It was fabulous. From Starbucks to First United Methodist Church that started, but other churches contributed, and it was just fabulous. And the first day that we sorted, after probably about two weeks of collection, I know we had over 100 coats. And I picked up my last stack from Starbucks last night. Jim Sloick from People's Bank helped pick them up. So, anyway, thank you to the whole community. It was fabulous. And thank you for caring about others in our community. That's it.
Counselor Holmberg.
Thank you Mayor. You know, I'd like to know if the mayor and the rest of the council, even the staff, have heard from the community complaining about the lineup of vehicles at the entrance to the base by the marina. From time to time, that line backs up clear to the intersection. Isn't there a possible way to re-stripe the designated left turn lane coming out of the marina as part of the stacking? You know, that doesn't take very much. It provides some stacking relief, but anybody coming out of the marina goes into the traffic lane and not really into the designated turning lane. We could use that. And then perhaps we could even consider taking part of that island out and using that as stacking also. Because there is, there is the width. The width in the street with the island in there is capable of handling three lanes, a designated stacking lane to relieve that lineup in there. Could we hear back from the mayor and perhaps in the near future about how we can solve that problem?
Yeah, I think our engineers have been in communication with those at the base about that now for a while. And we are potentially going to change some striping when we can paint it. You know, this time of the year is not, not the right time, but we are looking at that.
It is moving in that direction.
Yes. I've been in communication with the commanding officer on a monthly basis. We talk about the Maui Gate monthly. He says his wife texts him while she's waiting in line. And there is a permanent fix to move that gate back. Unfortunately, there's no money to do it for five years. That will probably even come with a roundabout. We need a, we need a solution quicker than that. We know that. We've had emergency vehicles in that line on a couple of occasions, so we do know that.
Do you suppose the city could make a small interest loan to the Navy if we went along? Thank you, that's all I have.
Yes, thank you. Okay, other council? Anything? Yes, Counselor Campbell.
Mr. Mayorman, I'd like to make it official when they requested putting something on the agenda for the, for this thing. Take a look at it, see what it would require to change ordinances, to do what they ask. I'm not saying we have to do what they ask, but let's look at it. And may I suggest the 14th, second meeting from now. Would that give you enough time?
One, we have a chance of staff to take a look at that, and we'll sure look at the information they provided us, and then we can get back with the mayor and with you, and let you know what that timetable would look like for us to be able to do that.
Thank you.
But we'll put that on the project list to look at.
While you're doing that, just so that you'll know, I sit on the Board of Health, and they have, they have this in process also, on a countywide basis. So, that would be something that I think would potentially affect us if they change it on a countywide basis. But that, you need, it'd be a good thing to communicate with Keith Higman at the county, at Island County.
Okay.
Okay, others? Yes, Counselor Heisen.
I had a really interesting history lesson today, and I just wanted to share it. As most, if not all of us know, February is Black History Month. And I learned today that when it was originally established in 1926, it was only a week long. And the reason that they chose the second week of February is because both Abraham Lincoln and Frederick Douglass's birthdays are in the second weekend of February. And so it went from a week to a month in 1976, 50 years later, when Gerald Ford, President Gerald Ford officially made it a national observance. And I liked the quote that he used when he made that, that national observance. And he said, "It was an opportunity for Americans to seize the opportunity to honor the two often neglected accomplishments of Black Americans in every endeavor throughout our history." And I thought that that really captured the spirit of the month, so I thought I would share that little factoid.
Thank you. Other comments? Anyone? Okay. We're moving on to the city administrator. Dr. Mayorman.
Hi, thank you Mayor and City Council. I have a sheet of my comments that I put together. I'm going to start doing that for each council meeting, so you have a little bit of a record of the information that we talk about. Hopefully you'll find that useful, and one can know some of the things that we're working on. But just to touch on the highlights of this, I've got this broken down into three areas. And they're the three that I always look at my job, is kind of focusing in on, and that's people, money, and land, or projects in there. So, starting with people, we have the recruitment dashboard that was sent out to city council that lists our open positions. And I have listed those here. We have the storm drain, wastewater specialist, and the status of where that is at. We did have 28 applicants, seven met the qualifications, and we have two ready to interview. And that process is ongoing. At the same time, we have the lateral entry police officer position. Lateral entry being those that come in with experience rather than being brand-new and going through the academy route. We've gone through the first round of interviews, and we're looking at planning next steps. There's some dynamics to that interview process that we're working out, but that'll be proceeding forward. The next area is, we had come to you once before about an agreement with a firm to help us with our non-represented salary survey. And for a few weeks now, city staff in that classification have been working on some questionnaires. And they talk about, in those questionnaires, what they do, what their essential job functions are, and some different dynamics and things like that. As you can imagine, when we have a number of non-represented people, we do, that's a lot of questionnaires to go through. So for the next couple of weeks, our consultant will be working with us to go through those and evaluating those, comparing those to our current job descriptions, and making sure things are aligned appropriately within our staff descriptions like that. We'll have more information coming forward as we move ahead with that process. Speaking of salaries and reviews like that, we also are looking at the salary commission, and this is for elected officials. It's a process where we go through the review for those that are elected. We sent out a call for recommendations, because that panel has not met in many years, and we're needing some people. I believe we had a couple of recommendations come in on that. But if you have any ideas on someone you think would be good for that panel, please give Dina Emery a call, and let her know to see whether we can get that panel staffed up. And then finally, under people, we have City Action Day Conference. As you know, this is coming up next week. We'll be all heading down to Olympia on Tuesday, the 14th. Make sure you cover your Valentine's Day commitments prior to leaving. We'll be meeting at 7:00 at the Bud Bay Cafe. And let me know if you need directions or anything on how to get there. We'll be meeting with our House Representatives and Barbara Bailey as well, to go over what our legislative priorities are, and have some time to meet with them. Again, that's February 14th at 7:00 at the Bud Bay Cafe. In money, we've had one good thing come up today. We did a million-dollar grant application to the county for rural economic development funds. This is a .09 money. The COG, the Council of Governments, had approved that previously. Today, this morning, it went to the Board of Commissioners, and they approved that grant. So that was good news. That's a million dollars towards our wastewater treatment plant. It's on a reimbursable basis, and they'll be sending us the contract documents, and we'll be signing those and getting those moving forward. On the budget standpoint, Patricia in finance, they're working very diligently on the document preparation now. Departments have been working on their department narratives, goals, and accomplishments. Those are all parts that go into the budget document aside from all of the tables of numbers. So I'm sure Patricia will be coming forward with information on that in the near future. And the last category, land projects. I've gotten some calls from council members on things like our franchise agreements, what we're doing with fiber optics, different things there. So I'm adding in a piece on that. We do have negotiations coming up on a number of our franchise agreements. PSC, this is one that we have sent an invitation out. We're kind of awaiting their confirmation to schedule some dates on that. Cascade Natural Gas is coming up. Soon we'll be doing that. And then we have the big one with Comcast. So we'll be looking at that and some other franchise agreements as well. We do have one effort that's underway with a number of staff right now. OMW is Ogden Murphy, the law firm. We've used them in the past, especially on the archaeological efforts that we had down on Pioneer Way. They have pulled together a consortium of cities. There are a number of cities that are working together on what's called a small cell deployment. And what a small cell deployment is, when you go into a city, you'll see a lot of large cell towers. But those cell towers don't always overlap each other, and there are pockets of bad reception. We could probably name a couple, even in this area where everyone's waving their phones around trying to get a connection, or say during the music festival. You have so many people trying to access that bandwidth becomes a problem. So what a small cell does, it's a small unit that covers some of those uncovered areas. And so there's a whole new approach to that technology, which means we have a whole new approach to our city code and our franchise agreements on how we deal with that. So the purpose of the consortium then, is to pool all these cities together so we share in the costs of developing those code amendments, and developing those templates for those franchise agreements. The good thing is, those will be generalized enough where we can use them in our other franchises as well. So we're kind of accomplishing a couple things in one step. So those are some of the things that we have coming forward. And then finally, on this one, I'm going to hand this off to Brett to do our wastewater treatment plant update.
We need to have her to care to give our clean water facility update. We are back to big machines again. If you remember about a year ago, we had the stone column machine out. We're now in the, after we've demolished the treatment plant back, they're putting those in. So we've got the two big machines out there. They're actually kind of noisy, unfortunately, but hopefully we'll get through them in a couple of weeks. But the machine in the back actually drills a hole into the ground, and then the machine up front drops the snout in, then we inject gravel into the, into the ground below it. So it basically acts as densification. It's pretty impressive, but it actually has become routine after a while. It was kind of exciting at first. Recent activities on the design side, we did have a Windjammer Park open house on January 12th. We had fairly good attendance, about 47 people there. We also conducted a open house online, and we received about 120 responses. 147 is the total number of responses that we received. I saw drafted a summary today, so we'll have that available for public circulation. We had a lot of good comments and a lot to absorb. We are continuing to work on our SCADA software development. I saw the initial software standards last week, so that's ongoing. Hopefully, in several months, we'll be able to show you something that's kind of interesting. Construction, pouring concrete. Unfortunately, with the weather, things were still ahead of schedule and below labor estimates, but we were very lucky that we got so far ahead in the fall, because we lost a lot this month. I came in yesterday, really did need a snow day on the construction side, and the kids were happy, but I wasn't. But we're getting at it. But we do have plans to start picking things up again, so we're all getting frustrated with the schedule, but it's a lot in the winter. We did complete demolition of the RBC plant. As I've shown earlier, we have started the stone columns, and we're also starting pre-construction activities for GMP Number 11. That involves 20 subcontractors that we're bringing onboard for various parts of the project. Unfortunately, in the last two weeks, we did find human remains. We were very lucky and able to resolve the problems very quickly. We're down to about two-day turnaround now, but those big blue machines that we have to stop for archaeology are very expensive. So our MOA is paying for itself. But also unfortunate with that, with our archaeological services, contingencies are depleted, so we'll bring back a contract for you, for an amendment on that. Funding, another piece of good news, we received a funding offer of 29, over 29 million. I will go to the, at 1.2% for the 2018 SRF allotment. You might remember, we applied for that last fall. This is subject to, let's just say, approval, but it is very good news for the project. And we're also pursuing funding opportunities, and Dr. Mayorman did mention the county, county loan, which is good news. We have a couple of things coming up in the near future for the council. We'll have a 21 council meeting. I will be bringing in the contract amendment with the RCI for the archaeological services. And also on March 7th, I'm hoping to bring a contract in with PSC and other utilities for utility relocations for the facility. We have to run new power lines in and such. Our schedule is pretty much on schedule. The schedule has become obsolete, so we've shown you a new version of it, but we're pretty much where we need to be, and we're still shooting to have this thing up and running in the summer of 2018. Public outreach, of course, we have www.ockharborcleanwater.org. You can call us, our 914-7000 number, or our extensions. Email us at treatmentplant@ockharbor.org. We do have a community drop-in session next Monday. And if somebody wants to drop in and ask questions, we do, we're available on appointment. We do have people come by and do that. Questions?
Counselor Holmberg.
Thank you Mayor. Any thoughts about the legislative approval or denial of the $29 million 2018 SRF funding?
Right now, my understanding is, there's, you know, with the, some of the promo is, the clean water fund is from the revolving loan program. That's a capitalization grant. And so I don't expect that to be impacted, but I'm not the expert, of course. But from the newspaper articles I've read, that stuff has been exempt from any EPA funding holes recently.
I can add into that a little bit. The SRF program that they use, once it gets through the initial phases, that we get this tentative approval by Department of Ecology, many times, you don't want to say that the legislative- legislative process is a rubber stamp, but it's actually gone through most of it. The Capitol Committee that works on the Capitol budget for the state, they're focused now more on member requests, and these are different requests, like we've put in for one, we got $2.5 million a year ago as a member request to the legislature. And Barbara Bailey's office helped us with that. The SRF program comes in as an addendum to that list that goes to the legislature, but the committee that vets the member requests, they do not address the SRF items. So they'll pretty much go to the legislature as-is, along with the approved vetted list from the Capitol Committee. So our probabilities are really strong that it'll probably get approved as-is without any changes to it.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? I have a question about the ERCI. Is that, that, is that a contract that was meant to end at this time?
No, we had services done through. We had to continue to see them out in case we found something. Unfortunately, we found four somethings. So that's just coming back to get us back up hold.
Okay, so it will add to the project cost?
Right, yes.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. So, I don't believe I see anything else on our agenda. It is 6:31 in the evening, and, yes, Counselor Servadius?
Move, you'd like to motion?
Move to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
In two seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No opposed. See you later.
Well, we broke a record today.